So I'm going to call the March 1st, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. Remind everyone that this meeting is being videoconferenced and recorded. So I'll ask that the clerk open with a roll. Thank you.
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Mr. Johnson. And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Okay, looks like we have four of our five Select Board members with us at this point, and perhaps Matt will be joining us shortly. I'll read the consent agenda, which reads as follows. Minutes to approve for January 25th, 2021, and January 5th, 25, 2021, executive session not to be released, and the town election warrant for March 25th, 2021.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss. You're muted, Jane.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thank you. That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. I think we're ready for the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just trying to get to my... You have the printed report in the packet. I just want to touch on a few items. The first that's not in the printed material is the Clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM on this Friday, March 5th, for voter registration. The 8:00 PM on Friday, the 5th is the deadline for voter registration, and they are, of course, located in the garden level of the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. Townhouse remains closed for renovations. So just for folks who want to register to vote, that is the deadline. And the town clerk does have a one-pager, or a fact sheet. That's actually two pages on the Clerk's website, if you want to get some more information about that, or just reach out to the town clerk. The phone number is still the same, and I can get information about voter registration that way. So, in the Town Manager's Report, I do want to touch on vaccines. As you noted in the report, we did sign on, myself and Susan Rass co-signed a letter with a number of other health directors and administrator managers from eight other communities requesting consideration for a regional vaccine center to the state. The state, the letter does detail what the requirements are and our assessment of the region's ability to meet those requirements. And I haven't heard back. I don't know when we will, but I will say that it was, the collaboration between the communities was very good, and it was a good process to just have the discussion with the other towns. It's not in the printed report, but I do want to... The Council on Aging has really done a great job of trying to reach out to our senior population and use the doses that we do have, the limited doses we have, to make sure we're reaching our most vulnerable. And that included last week, I think, more than 500 phone calls to the residents that we have in our database who are older than 81 years of age. And so we, and I think we've connected with just about all of them. And I think the, I think it's 150 doses that we have on hand will all be first doses and be put into arms of residents, I think, at the next clinic. So, behind, you know, with all the talk of online registration and everything else, we have been doing a lot of direct contact through the COA with our residents to make sure they get, especially our most vulnerable. So I haven't done a good job of talking about that work, but we do, there's been a lot of personal touch with that. Janice, you have your hand up. Do you want to ask about that?
No, I just wanted to reiterate your compliments to the Council on Aging because there had been a moment in time when we were anticipating my father might move in with us. He is 90, and I got a call on his behalf. Now, he lives in New Mexico, so he's not here receiving the vaccine. But that, I mean, that's, it really is as good as you said, Stephen, and it was really impressive. I was, I was very, I was very honored and proud of our resources.
Well, thank you for saying that. It's, like I said, it's a lot of work, and we're doing the best we can with the resources we have. A couple of the quick things. I'm going to go out of order from the memo, because I want to finish with the Light Plant, the CMLP report on billings, because I do want to touch base on that data and what we know and what we want to learn from that information. Dave Wood is, I believe, here. I don't see him, but yeah, he's here. And so he and I will talk a little bit about that at the end. By doing, note that we did talk about having a diversity, equity, inclusion, a DEI goal at SMT, and I just wanted to give a brief report to let the board know that we are working with subject matter experts on kind of developing a program, assessing us as an organization, but also working on a program. So it's, that process has gone a little slower than I think we would have liked, but it is ongoing, and it's a process. It's not one of these things where we're going to get a training and check the box and say, "We did our, we did our work on DEI." This is a long journey that we're going to, that I think we're already on in many ways, but we're going to be on as a group for a long time. And so we want to make sure we start from the right place, and that's why we're being pretty careful and thoughtful in how we, and how we go about the beginning of it. Couple of notes from CBW. We had a NAGOG Pond. We haven't talked a lot about that, but we do have the intake project that is, that has been in the administrative workings, in the permitting workings in the town of Acton. And that is a short way of describing a lot of consulting work and some, and I say legal work, not legal work related to litigation, but kind of legal analysis related to not only complying with our permit requirements from the town of Acton, but also there's a project in Littleton that is related that is requiring some comments for a DEP filing. So there's, even though it's not kind of out front and center, the discussions in the effort in NAGOG Pond continue regularly, if not daily. And then we did get our Chapter 90 allotment. This is something we're going to, we'll probably report out at the Transportation Advisory Committee and maybe take a look at what has the history of Chapter 90 been, and where does that money go? And kind of do a Chapter 90 101 for the TAC. And, you know, it's, it's not just asphalt. It's, it can be used for a lot of different things, and I think we do use it for a lot of different things. So that's what we'll be talking about at the committee level. DPLM had a couple of updates. We did get some, some of our local businesses have received some of microenterprise grants for economic impacts of COVID-19. We're trying to get others to pursue that money as well. And they got a, they did receive a grant for combating invasive species. And then, of course, there was an important, and the IT received the grant. The IT department got a grant for our cybersecurity awareness training program from the state. That was something that we had built, was in our original budget request that we were planning on doing anyway, so that grant is really kind of a bonus. So congratulations to the IT department for that. MBTA is changing, is doing some, sorry, is doing some work on the Fischberg Line, which goes through Concord. And so there's going to be shuttle services for a number of months. We've worked with the TE on identifying some, what a amount to bus stops for that shuttle as they do work on that rail line. And there's a schedule that was in the packet that shows the shuttle schedule for the Fischberg Line as well. And then finally, and actually, before we get into the CMLP thing, any questions on any of that other stuff I ran through kind of fast? Sorry?
Yes, thank you for this comprehensive report. I think this is going really well, having these written Town Manager Reports. It gives us a good update on things. So I have a few questions. So on the DEI, when you say "subject matter expert", is that a consultant that we are going to hire? And where would we get the funding?
We have funding in our, in various budgets for training. We've got funding in various budgets for professional and technical services. And since this is a townwide thing, we would probably, you know, we'd look at which department budget line items for those areas and others that would be appropriate, haven't been expended. And so we may cobble together a few different sources, but it's something that, you know, the initial expense isn't, you know, it's in the low tens of thousands of dollars, not in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's, like I said, it's the start of a long journey. So I think we will likely build something into future budgets, but it's, you know, something that we can absorb townwide.
Okay, and then it looks like we're also getting a grant for cybersecurity, which is great. Maybe you could tell us a little bit more about that and about the 365 that I understand we're going to be getting. And if you don't want to talk about it now, maybe at a future meeting?
Sure.
Or, either way, a one-minute synopsis now or a future meeting?
So the grant that we got is not for an amount of money. It is the training. The state will provide the training program for the staff. And I will say, I'm happy to bring Jason back at an upcoming meeting and have him kind of explain, Jason Bolger, our IT director, and explain our work on 365 and this grant and any other technology issues that we've been working through. He's, it's been busy for him, and so, you know, we're looking at a lot of different changes. Some, some were planned, some were a result of the pandemic, and some are even, you know, things that were unplanned, not related to the pandemic that we need to do, that we didn't know we needed to do on the timeline we're on now. So yeah, I'm happy to have a more detailed conversation with Jason in a future meeting. Sure.
That would be great, because I saw something about this 365, and I have to say, I'm like really ignorant. I don't really understand what it is. I guess it's cloud-based, so whatever. I think it would be good. And also about the security and any other changes, for us to get up to speed on that. And my last question is on the Transportation Advisory Committee. So I'm wondering, and Jane could correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking that the original idea that we had of this was that it would be an overall policy strategy committee about transportation. And I'm wondering if this committee is going to be developing some overall guidelines or policies in the transportation area?
I mean, Jane, if you want to offer your review on that, I could offer mine as well.
I mean, we, we talked about this, you know, it's been discussed since In Vision Concord came out as to what we might want to do with transportation. So some of these conversations precede Stevens having joined us. And yes, there was always an anticipation that it would be an overarching, there would be an element of it that would be overarching, that would look at all of the different components that go into, again, local transportation with the understanding that regional transportation issues fall into different buckets, just as we've just heard about the MBTA, for instance. And in its, you know, in current concept, I guess I would turn it back over to Stephen, because I'm not, I'm the liaison. I'm not a member of the committee.
Yeah, so Terry, I think two things have happened. Well, first of all, Jane's right. It was always going to be looking at local, like the Sudbury Road crossing is an issue that was, I think the Transportation Advisory Committee conceived of by In Vision Concord would not have done that. And so you would have to disconnect between overall transportation policy initiatives and, you know, rubber-hits-the-road project initiatives. And so that's one of the reasons why we created the model that we did, so you could have both, the same committee do both. It's still a new committee, and so the areas and, you know, regional and overarching transportation, you know, patterns have completely changed. And it's not clear if or when they're going to go back to the pre-pandemic modes or levels. And so the focus has been on kind of, you know, I don't say competence building of the committee, because all the people on the committee are very smart and highly competent, but sort of going through the kind of basics of what goes into the transportation network. Like, we did a session on the cut-through study, which had, was completed in the fall of 2019, but wasn't really talked a lot about. So we went, Steve Dukran presented that to the committee, so they understand it as a cut-through and the methodology. And so we're kind of building that knowledge base of what's already been done. So as we now start to look at, okay, well, where are transportation and commuting patterns? And also what local projects are impacted by that going forward? They have a sense of what's already come, you know, what are the kind of basic definitional things? We've also established a bicycle subcommittee, and so we do know, and we're aware that there are issues out there related to multi-use trails and things like that that we're going to have to get to. But like I said, it is a new committee, and we're kind of going through the building block process because we're watching and seeing what's happening with the, with the transportation world.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, it sounds like you, things have changed under COVID since the days when In Vision Concord imagined this overarching committee. And also you're building, you're putting in building blocks, but eventually the committee might do some overarching policies. I'm thinking of before you had some policies then, when an issue like Junction Park or the rail trail or whatever comes up, we have some guidelines to work with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, each of those, each of those circumstances are unique, so I don't know what policy guidelines would apply to them universally, but that's certainly a discussion we'll have.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Manager, Susan?
Yeah, Stephen, I just had a question on the bottom of page two, where you discuss the CBDG microenterprise grants. Near the end, it says Concord still has approximately $170,000 available for distribution. Is that Concord or is that the whole set of towns?
I believe that is Concord's share of the whole that was applied for, by the region. But each individual business has to apply to access that. It's not like we, it's not like CARES money, where we got an allocation and all we had to do was send them paperwork as a town. The individual businesses have to apply for that.
But I thought there was something in that agreement that after a certain number of rounds of grant, of, you know, offerings, that it all went into a pool that anybody could apply for. I might be mistaken about that, but...
I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I don't want to put Marcia on the spot, but I don't know if...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, I'm fine with your answer, so, till we find out.
Yes, yeah, no, Marcia's been the one who's been running point for us on this, so I don't know if you could answer that question more archly than me.
We decided that, no, we could not put it into a large pot and just have everyone access it. So the money that was set aside for Concord remains in Concord, and we do have $170,000 left to allocate and distribute.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we've continued to try and focus on outreach to businesses who would, who would be eligible to get them to, you know, want to apply. But it's ultimately, it's not, it's not the simplest application, even though we, everyone tried to make it simple. And so not every business has, you know, has really desired to go through that process. So if there are other questions, I did want to talk about the part about the CMLP. Every year, every year around this time, they do an analysis of delinquencies developed during a normal winter moratorium. As you know, under, under regular times, you're not allowed to shut off certain utilities in the winter. Certain orders were put in place by the governor during COVID-19 that really extended that and expanded that. And so those end on April 1st. Those were, the order expires on April 1st, and we haven't seen any sign of it being extended. And so the process of, you know, looking at delinquencies for electric, water, sewer, and broadband has started. And the reason why I wanted to put this on the board's radar screen is, I know I don't want to speak for Dave, but it's, it's a long list, and a longer list than I think we're accustomed to. And so is that, you know, what's driving that? Is it, you know, better awareness of the moratorium on shut-offs, and so people have held off paying? Or is it, is it a financial impact of the pandemic? You know, we talked about this at SMT this morning. So it's this, these delinquencies, and then looking at the delinquencies associated with motor vehicle excise taxes, and kind of put that up against what remains a very strong rate of property tax collection. And those factors, you know, don't necessarily line up 100%. And so how do we look at that data in a way that tells us? Is this, you know, is there, is there a conclusion to be drawn from the delinquencies? But that conversation really started in earnest this morning, because we just started, we really just started looking at the delinquencies in detail late last week. Dave, do you want to add anything more to that?
No, I think, I think you did a good job. I mean, the numbers are up. You know, we go through this process every year, and usually we start when the moratorium's lifted. We're not actually going to fully start the process on April 1. We want to do some notification and outreach to our customers. There's 999 accounts that are past due, total $680,000. So it's a lot, and, you know, you're going through the three. Electric, it's 629 customers, and that's $504,000. Water is 325 customers, and it's about $165,000. And then broadband is 45 customers, about $11,000 past due. So we have it all broken out into 30, 60, 90 days past due. And, you know, we're going to start getting our process started, but it's going to be, it won't start on April 1st. We'll, we'll push it out some.
But Dave, if I may ask, it, it sounds like this is clearly higher than what you're used to at this time of year.
Yeah, it's, it's, the dollar amount's probably around 10% higher, but the number of accounts is significantly higher.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? Dave, you said 30, 60, and 90 days, and I have to confess that, you know, becoming a month behind on something can often mean somebody stuck a bill someplace and didn't come back, didn't find it again. Are you lumping those all together? Are we really talking about that level of, of... You understand what I'm saying, is it?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, so for the 30 days, there's about $178,000 past due. 60 is about $50,000 past due, and 90 is $207,000 past due. So we have it broken out. We totally get the, you know, the 30 days someone missed a bill, you know, and we have a process that we follow with that. You know, when we started, you know, we really start with the 90 days first, because obviously they're furthest behind. And when we start, you know, the first thing we do is we put a friendly bill reminder on that they're past due. That's kind of the first little notification. And then, you know, I'd say you get a good percentage of the customers that go, "Oh, yeah, I got to pay that," and they get caught up. So that's, that's how we'll start the process. You know, and again, we want to make sure that people are informed that this is what we're doing, opposed to just April 1, starting the process.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remind people who may be in this situation that if you know you're behind, it's not too soon to reach out to the customer service departments at CMLP and ask about a payment plan and some other options. I mean, you know, we want to, we want to work with people. I mean, the utilities are businesses in effect, and so we do have to run the business. But we, you know, we are ready to work with folks if they have any circumstances.
Yeah, and to that point, normally on our budget plans, we do six-month budget plans. We've extended that to be 12 months for people to get caught up. We figured that was the right thing to do, so we're modifying that for this period of time.
Thanks very much. That's all helpful information for everyone. Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the next item, which is to review the amendments to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force. At our last meeting, I suggested some changes based on the fact that this charge was, had been written two years prior, and now the committee is really ready to start, and there have been some changes since then. I tried to capture all of the comments that I heard from the board, and I see we have Marcia here today to answer other questions that may come up as well. So...
Did you mean to overlook your remarks?
Thank you, Jane. The Town Manager's remarks go on, and we involve other people in that discussion, so I already think we're in the agenda, so thanks for the reminder. I'll just briefly say that, in terms of the chair's remarks, that Carmen Reese, our town moderator, asked me to reiterate an item that she may not have underscored to the jury that she wanted to at the Saturday preview meeting, and that is for any town meeting warrant that was either postponed at last year's town meeting or sent to committee, that those warrant articles, if they are going to go forward, need to be resubmitted for this year's warrant. And that would also apply to subsequent presentation material that will probably follow. So if there's any question about that, please contact Carmen Reese, our town moderator. So thank you for that important reminder, Jane. Okay, I'm going to move on now to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force charge. There is, was a new one in the packet today that tried to incorporate the feedback that we discussed at the last meeting. And so I do want to comment that the header, which indicated the original approval date, which was April of 2018, some date in April 2018, was inadvertently removed from the redline copy that you got today. So that'll be added, in addition to, if we're in a point to approve this, then the new approval date will be added as well. So any comments from the Select Board?
Well, Linda, just briefly, I had some comments last time, and I think you did a good job incorporating them, and so, thank you.
Thank you. I think most of the comments were straightforward. Most of the revisions were straightforward, sometimes just correcting either tense, because we're grammatical tense, given where we are at this date and so forth. Okay, seeing no other comments, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendments to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm sitting this one out.
Okay, Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, so that was, please have the record note that Matt Johnson abstained on this issue and that the other four members approved. So that's...
Recused on this issue, yeah.
Yeah, so that passes, and the chair so declares. Thank you very much. All right, the next three items on the agenda all apply to either a couple warrant articles that were originally proposed for last year and/or additional warrant articles that the Select Board will discuss today. I just want to comment that for those that are revisiting, let's say, this year, that any number that was assigned to that article last year will clearly no longer apply, and that there will be a new article number, and I want to be clear about that, and that'll prevent some confusion going forward. And for the individuals that we're going to talk to, if warrant articles from last year, it is that the presenters decide that they are going to go forward, that you please make contact, not only with Carmen Reese, the town moderator, but also Chris Carmody in the Town Manager's Office on these articles. but also Chris Carmody in the town manager's office on these articles. So having said that, let's move to the Climate Action Advisory Board draft warrant article on local regulations restricting new fossil fuel infrastructure in certain conditions. For those of us who were at the preview meeting on Saturday, there was a presentation on this. I think what will be very helpful today is for the public to hear how this proposed warrant article for this year may differ from last year in addition to the content. So who do we have here presenting today? I see Kate Hadley is here, Jake Swenson is here, and I believe I saw Alice Kaufman here as well, who did the presentation on Saturday. So Kate, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're all here. So I'm, I'll give an introduction to the request from the Climate Action Advisory Board, and Jake Swenson is the chair of that board, and he's also here and can chime in. But to Linda's point about how this is different from last year, so in your packet was a brief memo explaining the request. This is a follow-up to what we were here for earlier in February with the request for the non-binding resolution. So this is the second step, this request for the select board to sponsor the Article of Town Meeting for a Home Rule petition to prohibit the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure and new construction. So the first step of our larger strategy on decarbonizing the built environment was that non-binding resolution is the second step. And the Home Rule petition is simply the way to move forward with what was of Article 40 from 2020 Town Meeting, which was not moved. The select board was prepared to move forward that article, which was modeled after a bylaw that Brookline passed to prohibit new fossil fuel infrastructure and new construction. But as you know, the Attorney General decided that bylaw was in conflict with state law. So through a program that we've shared, briefed you on before with Rocky Mountain Institute that was providing guidance to communities looking to decarbonize and electrify buildings, we have learned that a Home Rule petition is a viable option to reaching those same goals as the original Article 40. So CAB is unanimously in support of this approach and is requesting that the select board sponsor the article. I know Alice gave a great presentation at Town Meeting, so I don't want to reiterate all of the details, but I can just emphasize a few of kind of the main points that are why this article is important. Buildings contribute the largest portion of greenhouse gas emissions, well over 60% in Concord. And as you all know, we have an 80% greenhouse gas reduction goal by 2050. And electrifying everything, buildings especially, is is really important for meeting our climate goals because electricity is the only source of energy that can be made renewable and non-emitting. And the good news here is that this dovetails with a lot of other efforts that are going on in Concord. So CMLP, as you know, is taking steps to decarbonize our electricity grid, as is the state. And we're also working to electrify existing homes through our heat pump rebates that CMLP provides, and just recently launched a Concord Clean Comfort Program that's providing coaching, support to residents to make that transition. So this article would address new construction and ensure we're not locking our community into fossil fuel infrastructure that won't meet our goals in the near term and the long term. So I'll stop there and see if Jake wants to add any clarifications or additional points from the CAB's perspective. And I know Alice is here too to help answer your questions.
Thank you, this is Jake. I just, I think Kate did an amazing job of summarizing that, so I won't add anything else other than just to emphasize that, you know, CAB was unanimous in supporting this, this, this action and the Home Rule petition and really hope that you'll continue to support us on this journey to really ensure that we have, as a town, the capability to support the continued momentum that we've built towards reducing our carbon emissions. And this is a really important element. It also sends a signal to the, to the state. There are a number of other communities that are engaging in this same exact process. And so this is also just reemphasizing to the state government that this is a priority for a number of communities in the state. And, you know, the hope is that there'll be some state government action on this as well that, you know, will continue to support our, our goals as a community as well as the rest of the communities in Massachusetts.
Thank you for those comments. By way of providing some additional context before we open up for other questions here, I'd first like to ask, I've heard the terminology requesting a Home Rule petition, and that certainly makes sense to me, but you're also saying bylaw on some of the written material that was given to us. And so if you could just clarify where you're coming from on that point. And then the second point is that the, I'm wondering why CAB is not bringing this forward on their own merits because of all the work that you've done on this, which has been, you know, very good work. And and the select board was happy to endorse the non-binding resolution as, you know, an overall signal in terms of their importance to this whole issue. But I am wondering about that. And then the third thing, and again, this is just by, all by way of trying to provide context before we get into other questions here. There was reference earlier, and and thank you for reminding us of this, of the work that's being done through the Rocky Mountain Institute Accelerator. And I've heard reference to a team that's embarking on that work. And it seems that that team cuts across committees. And so if someone could just address that, so the select board fully understands that. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good questions, Linda. And I'll do my best to answer a couple of them, and then maybe ask Alice to chime in. I'll start with your last question about this team. So the Rocky Mountain Institute was doing a series basically of Zoom webinars to help communities understand what their options were. So that was just kind of an ad hoc group of folks from town who are interested in this and many folks who are involved in getting ready for Article 40 last year. And so I was participating in that group as well. On your question about the bylaw versus Home Rule petition, I'm still learning about Home Law petitions as we go, but the discrepancy may be that some of the language is from last year's drafts. So that may be why you see bylaw on some of the, the materials. And we'll have to take a look and make sure we have that all straightened out as we get ready for, for Town Meeting.
Conversation with Carmen around that will be helpful, too.
Yeah, definitely. And the question about why not CAB moving this forward? I think they, they, you know, wanted to get your support of this and see that maybe more successful at Town Meeting coming from, from the select, select board. But I don't, I don't want to speak for CAB. So Jake, I don't know if you want to add on to that or?
Yes, I, I would agree. That was the sentiment that in our discussion as a group, people brought up the concern that, you know, that if this came from CAB, it may not be viewed as, you know, quite as, with as much importance as if it came from the select board. So our hope is that the select board will, will support this and, and move it forward, you know, knowing that obviously CAB is, is very supportive of it.
Okay, and whatever decision the select board makes about that, we will not be taking, I just want to be clear, we will not be taking positions today on the various warrant articles that we're discussing. That comes at a later point. But I do hear your request for the select board to consider sponsoring this. Okay, other questions from the select board members? Terry?
Yes, to follow up on your question, Linda, I'm still having difficulty getting my arms around what's the differences between the article we were going to do last year, which we couldn't do because it was ruled out of order in Brookline. So we decided not, what's the difference this year? Are you saying it's not going to require a bylaw change? Or last year wasn't a Home Rule petition? So I'm a little confused about that. And also what might help is I see there's two highlighted sections in the packet, in the draft article. So I'm assuming that those two highlighted sections are some of the differences or maybe all of the differences from last year.
I'll take a stab, and maybe Alice can chime in. Last year's was not a Home Rule petition, it was just a bylaw. Attorney General said that that was in conflict with the state law around building codes and municipalities not being able to set their own building codes. Petition is kind of an additional step where, similar to other Home Law petitions, Concord would ask the state for permission to have a bylaw that would apply. Just to Concord, that would be different from state law. I see Alice turn on her video, maybe she can correct me if I misspoke there or has anything to add.
The only thing I would add is that you're right, a Home Rule petition is a way for us to get the authority to enact the bylaw. So the way it was written, we're hoping the town council would be able to take a look at this and make sure the language is consistent with the request for Home Rule. You can't just go to the legislature and say, I want the authority to do whatever I want in my town. You have to tell them what you're going to do with it. And so we, but what we want to do with a Home Rule petition is get the authority so that we can do the bylaw. So it's actually a two-step process in here. We need, we're asking for a Home Rule petition, a Home Rule legislation, so that we can then institute a bylaw that would allow us to require all new construction be fossil fuel free. So they don't give you a blanket authority to do anything. You have to tell them what you're doing it for.
Yeah, which may or may not come back to Town Meeting if it was approved by the state, right?
You know, the, as you're well aware, Home Rule petitions can take many years. If I recall, last year's legislature didn't move any Home Rule petitions forward. We're hoping that, you know, with some, you know, 10 or so communities all asking for a Home Rule, they're going to say, something's going on here. There's a, I'm getting a sense that there's a, a wave happening. And help them make decisions based, you know, for the, the next generation legislation, next generation climate policy bill has a lot of what we need in it, but we don't have that bill, and we don't know the status of that bill. And we don't know what the outcome of that bill is going to be in the end. So this is a way to keep moving forward with Concord's, Concord's goal, which is to meet our own greenhouse gas emission reduction goals.
Thank you. Jane? You're on mute, yeah.
Thank you. And given, and given so many of the things that are being discussed, I can see that my later liaison report is going to be very short, which is great because I'm the liaison to the Climate Action Advisory Board. A couple of things I just wanted to note. One, the Climate Action Advisory Board was created as an advisory board to the select board. So that's where I would see it very appropriate if we decided to, to vote, yeah, in favor of it, for us to bring the warrant article forward. And, and in keeping with our, what we attempted to do last year. And I also just wanted to note a couple of things that, both as a liaison and as a, an individual I've seen, which is that the important part of this process, and I understand that the Attorney General, while she deemed it, you know, while she, she sent back Brookline's warrant or article, she didn't disagree with it from a policy perspective, it was more the process. And now we're moving it through a different process. But the good news from my perspective is, to the extent that we're trying to also send signals to developers as well as signals to ourselves about whether, you know, what the community of Concord is interested in, taking, putting this warrant article forward would allow Concord at Town Meeting to indicate how comfortable Concord is with the beginning of this process, which I, as a select board member, granted, I will now no longer be on the select board at that point, would be a good point of indication to us about, you know, gas, gas infrastructure, for say. And I'm not trying to penal or pick on anything, but I'm just saying, I think it's a really good piece of information for us to be receiving. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments from select board members?
So I just wanted to review that, assuming, let's just say that the Home Rule petition is granted, the next steps for us would be to draft a bylaw and in consultation with town council that would somehow augment or amend the building code as it applies to Concord as well as utilities law in a legal way that would allow us to achieve our goals. Is that, that the idea? And then we take that to Town Meeting and get that passed? I mean, I realize that that's really not Plan A for this. Plan A for this is that, that our state legislature comes up with reasonable laws. But I'm just trying to say on the face of it, what would happen if this petition was granted and we were to proceed?
So, yeah, I'll take that one. It's a really good question. Here's my understanding is that if this gets approved at Town Meeting, it goes to the legislature. And we're asking for the authority to actually implement what was last year's Article 40. So it's included in the request for a Home Rule. So the entire bylaw is written. We had it reviewed by town staff a year ago. We had met with the building department, we met with the planning department, we met with a lot of, almost all the committees last year. So, and then we had it reviewed by an attorney. But we don't have town council having reviewed it. My understanding is that because it's a package, you're saying we want Home Rule to do this, not unlike how we did the real estate transfer tax. We spelled out what that Home Rule would have done if we get it and how we're going to implement a real estate transfer fee. So you, you have to go forward with the whole package. So that's my understanding. So then, you know, when this gets approved at Town Meeting, Town Meeting says, okay, I see what we're trying to do, here's the bylaw, I got it. And we're looking for the authority to be able to implement it.
They could grant Concord the authority to overrule building code and the utilities law through the stroke of this pen. Because, I mean, okay.
So the laws are very, are old, they've been on the books for decades. It's time for them to be upgraded. Here's one.
Absolutely, I mean, I have no, no question about that. I just think it is, I'm trying to think of other cases in which we could kind of encode our own laws on top of other, I mean, like that, but.
So I can add one thing, and I think your question, I really love this conversation and the questions. The, Tammy Govea and.
Michael Derrick? Oh, okay.
And Jamie Eldridge just filed a piece of legislation that would allow an opt-in building code for communities who are either green communities or who want to have an opt-in on a net zero building code as a separate piece of legislation. So they just filed that a week or so ago. All of these are coming together, that they're trying to find ways, as well as the communities trying to find ways to move forward on building electrification. And somehow, you know, the more holes you poke at this, the maybe the closer we're going to get to being able to do it, whether it's Home Rule legislation or the legislature acts quickly enough to, on any of the pieces of legislation in there, all of these are options, but we're all getting at the same thing. Communities want the ability to regulate greenhouse gas emissions within their, you know, walls.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments from the select board members? So, this was a helpful conversation today. I know you'd like us to make a decision about whether the select board is going to support this or not in terms of the town. Have we seen the final language, I guess, for this warrant article?
I believe so.
Have you talked with Carmen already about the format that it's in?
No, we, at some point, town council will have to review it for Home Rule petition language. No, we, at some point, town council will have to review it for home rule petition language. But it was reviewed and written with the help of an attorney. One of the former assistant AGs.
Okay. I see a comment from the public. Let's see, let me just, yeah, Alice, go ahead.
I just have one question. You know, I'm not sure whether, whether the committee, I'm unfamiliar with the process by which as an individual committee in Concord that has been appointed by the select board would bring an article to town meeting without the select board. Unless the select board says, we don't want anything to do with that. So it'd be unusual, I think, for CAB, which not impossible, to bring an article to town meeting rather than the select board, because they are appointed by the select board. So, but it's not impossible. Anyone can bring an article to town meeting. And so I think that's why the request was made to the select board as CAB was looking at it. It's clearly within their purview to be able to move forward on the town's goals for decarbonization. But the weight of the select board is far greater than that of a committee.
We, okay, thank you for that comment. Pamela Drip, I am going to call on you while we're on this topic.
Thank you. And thank you for considering this. I think it's important that, we all know we're in the climate crisis and we don't have enough time. And this is one of the things we must do to act. And I don't think it matters, any of our, I urge you to unanimously go on and trust that if there are any little glitches in the language or so on, it will get fixed. And that the danger of not acting is far greater than the, any risks of actually acting. We need to act unanimously as the whole community and not consider that environmental issues are just a side issue to real life.
Okay.
Please approve it. We can't fight climate change without decarbonization. And we have to be able to require new construction to be decarbonized.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
It'll be cheaper in the future for us. Not just better, but cheaper.
All right. Thank you very much.
Linda, can I just ask you a question before we take this any further? My, I just want to clarify that we've already, in a previous, we intended to bring this article forward.
Correct.
At a previous town meeting.
Yeah.
So, and that's all we're being asked about tonight, is whether the select board is going to bring this forward to this town meeting. Not whether we're going to support, you know, what our, obviously, it's a little cart and horse. It'd be odd for us to bring something forward and then say, but we don't, we don't support it. But the action tonight is just whether we would bring it forward.
That's absolutely right. Yeah. Okay. So I'm not seeing any other comments here, so I would entertain a motion from the
Just the other thing.
Matt, go ahead.
You know, your question was pretty crucial, Linda, about whether we've seen the final article, whether it might need amendment to become, you know, solid enough, you know, to go before town meeting. I mean, I think that maybe we could go ahead and, and vote with the intent to bring it forward, realizing that it may need amendments.
And as I said, you know, we're not taking a position on it tonight.
Whether to sponsor it, even to decide whether to sponsor it, not knowing what form the article really might ultimately be in.
Yeah. So you're questioning whether or not that's wise to go forward under those conditions, correct?
Well, again, it's not because I have any concerns about the, being very aggressively pursuing, you know, green infrastructure, but it's just about sponsoring an article that we're not sure yet what it all, you know, that the moderator hasn't looked at, that we don't know what its form is. That's all.
Yeah. So we do meet next week. There is time to get to Carmen. There is time to clarify the, just even the draft language, I think. I think you're almost there. And I think we would have a, and as Jane has pointed out, we did sponsor this last year. And we have previously supported a non-binding resolution. So I think in all likelihood, we would be prepared to move this, sponsor this on behalf of the, of the committee. But I, I think we would all have a little more degree of comfort talking to Carmen first and getting it in the form that you expect to see it, even though you're almost there. Okay?
Linda, I just yeah, I agree that in substance, it's something we could support, but I'm not, what's not clear to me is what the urgency is of doing it today versus after the, the steps of the moderator and town council reviewing it, which would certainly be before the hearings and other steps that we take before town meeting.
Well, town council will be looking at all the warrants at a later point. But certainly Carmen, checking in with Carmen at this point would be key. Yeah. All right. Do I have general consensus on that from select board members? Okay, I'm seeing heads nod, so I'm going to thank you everyone for all the work that's already been done on this. I know this is year two for you. You're persistent. You're doing some good homework. You're working on a lot of aspects of this. I think we do understand the process of working with the state and the state being involved at a number of different levels on topics that need to move forward, not only at a state level, but at a local level. We're dependent on that. So we, we hope to see you back here next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I think we're going to move on next to, next article, which is on the Select Board FY21 Goal ATM Housing Appropriation. This is on the agenda today for a discussion. As you can see from the title, this was in our FY21 Goals. And we have not yet decided whether or not we are going to sponsor a warrant to this effect. So I'm open to reactions and comments from select board members. Matt?
So as the liaison to the Community Preservation Committee, I just wanted to note that they only allocated about 16% of their funds to community housing this year, 233,000 to affordable housing. And so as things stand today relative to the level of investment that we've been making over the past several years, this would be, you know, the lowest point we've reached in quite some time. So, you know, when you think about the needs for affordable housing, I think if anything, they're, they're greater than they have been in the past. And while the budgets are tight, I just think that making some at least modest contribution with whatever, you know, free cash allocation is available, similar to Article 14 last year, you know, would be, I think, something that we should try to support, given our goals. So I just wanted to bring that forward for discussion. Again, we don't have to decide tonight, but I just wanted to try to see if we could keep it alive as an idea. Because there are many possible uses of free cash and, you know, lots of competition for it. But this is, I think, a more important one.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Yeah, I agree with what Matt said. A couple, when we passed the three articles, I guess it was last year, the two home rule petitions with the real estate surcharge and the building permit surcharge and the $500,000 in free cash. And the, the understanding at that time was that we would support affordable housing with a free cash allocation until those two other streams of revenue came into being and provided, the thinking was that there needs to be some revenue stream for affordable housing. And in the absence of the home rule petitions, that it's important to allocate some free cash. And I agree, there's concern about that because the level is certainly different than it's been in past years because we allocated a lot last year. But I think, as, as Matt said, the need is, is not stabilizing or decreasing, it's increasing. So I think we need to support that in some fashion.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
I just wanted to also support Matt's comments and just hearken back to earlier in our select board meeting, the report from CMLP on, on some of the difficulties that clearly there are residents in town are having, meeting their utility burdens, as well as the understandings I have as a liaison to the Hugh Carville Trust, all of which points out that we're nowhere, that anything that we can do to put money into, again, in this case, the housing appropriation. We know there's a need. We know that there are parts of Concord that are not doing well right now. And we also know that in our goals for, for diversity in our housing stock and diversity of access to housing in Concord, that this is right in line. So I think that this, I think it makes sense.
Okay, Terry?
I agree with all of those comments, but I just want to play devil's advocate about one other consideration, which is the last time that we heard a report, I believe it was 2019 and 2020, each of those years, we put in $500,000. And at the last time we had the report, I think if I'm recalling correctly, we had spent first $200,000 from FY19 and then of the FY20. So if that's still the case, then we have $700,000 in free cash right now available for affordable housing. So maybe there are some plans where that money will be getting used in the next few months. I guess I would feel more comfortable supporting another allocation if I know that we're really going to need it. But, because I totally agree, the need for free, for affordable housing is extremely great. But if we're not going to spend the money for three or four more years and money is tight this year, then we might want to reconsider. So I guess I want to ask Stephen or Marcia or somebody if we have spent more than the $200,000 in, or whether we have some plan to do so soon.
I don't, I think Marcia's no longer with us. I can say to you that at our last select board meeting, we just approved another $100,000 from the appropriation for the buydown of the Emerson Annex.
That's right.
And there are, there, I think it was also brought to our attention that there are opportunities like that for other expired, for expirations of other affordable housing units that will be coming up. And it's, you know, it's one of these, this last one that we just approved, there was really no advance warning on that. So if you're not in a position to act, we lose the ground that we've already, in this case, that was an SHI, already on the SHI, and we would have lost it. So that, that may not answer your full question, but that's
Thank you for that. So that would mean, that would mean that we've spent about $300,000. So we might have $700,000 left. But perhaps Stephen knows some
Yeah, we, I don't, we, you got a report on this, I think, two meetings ago. Or maybe it was a third meeting ago. So there was a detailed report on how much is left and what's been spent and what has been committed to. I think the overall numbers you started with are right. I think only the $200,000 that has been, has been obligated. But then, as Linda mentioned, that was another $100,000. And one of the reasons why, I think, Linda, I can't really say it any better than that. These things come up quickly and the town needs to be nimble, which is why this appropriation started well before my time. This has been a town need for a while. And, you know, when I, when we went through the process last week with the buydown, you know, Matt, I think, made the comment about appraisals. Well, you know, property is expensive and to, to, to create that level of affordability, it, you know, it's a significant cost. And so without a doubt, the town needs to continue to make contributions to, you know, once we get an affordable housing trust set up, to continue to contribute that in addition to any other, or until we get a reliable funding stream that's, that's a kind of a recurring thing. I think the point that we, that we're making though is this year, can it be at the same level as past years? And that's one of the things we are looking at as part of the overall picture. And this free cash, but there are other uses of free cash that we may look at. Not for operating budget, but for maybe one-time expenses that are typically carried in the operating budget, purchases of equipment or something like that, like non-capital equipment. We're still working through that process. But again, I think it's, I don't want to, I don't want to equate looking at a possible reduction in that commitment this year to a reduction in the, in the commitment to doing it. Because the commitment to continue doing it is high, it may just be a numbers game this year.
Okay, Matt?
I just wanted to mention that I was actually proposing something fairly modest this year, more modest than usual, even just like $250,000, just given the fiscal environment we're on. But, but that, you know, we at least do something. And that's all I was trying to do was to, you know, keep a little bit of forward motion here under the circumstances. So we just keep, keep it in mind. So I think there may be a middle way here. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. And I think the select board has put, as well as some town represent, citizen representatives have put a fair amount of effort in continuing to work with the legislative groups and committees on the two home, previous home rule petitions that were approved for the transfer fee surcharge and the building fee surcharge in terms of continuing to work on creating a revenue source going forward. So, you know, there's been, like everything in housing, there's parallel tracks of effort that are going on to, to address this. All right. I, I think helpful to hear everyone's comments. I would like to also leave this till next week to act on, along with the, the other ones that we're considering today. But I think we had a chance to explore this a little more fully. All right, thank you. I'm going to move on to the next one, which is the status of the annual town meeting 2020 article on neonicotinoids prohibition. I believe Mark Hanson was going to be here today with us. And I'm not seeing him here. All right, let me, let me bring to your attention two different items that he's corresponded with me on, on this topic. And Jane can, I think, can comment along the way here too, because she's raised a question about where we are with the committee. I went back and looked at the charge, the committee of the Nicotinoids Pollination Committee, that's not the correct title, it was an advisory committee on this, Advisory Health Committee on this topic. Expired in May of 2020. They have not met since, as far as I can tell. They have not met since, as far as I can tell. However, when I approached Mark Hanson a couple of weeks ago about where we were on this article, he indicated at least his interest. And and he may have spoken informally with the previous committee members about their interest in moving this forward again this year. This was one of the articles that the select board sponsored. And again, probably because it was an advisory committee to the select board, as Jane pointed out earlier. Jane, do you have any more recent information on the committee's status?
I don't. I know that the the members of the committee who were engaged, I thought, in fact, for some reason, I thought we had re-upped the committee's charge, or at least it came up at a select board meeting acknowledging that the committee had not finished their work. And that that we we discussed extending the charge. I I just don't think that it may have gotten followed followed through on.
We certainly agree, that may be. And it may not have gotten recorded on the charge itself. And we certainly agreed to bring it forward in terms of last year's town meeting. So I see Steve Merrill has his hand up.
Did Brian Kramer come on? I think not. He and I were subcommittee of the ag committee to come up with a position. And we have one here that we drafted. It's strictly a draft form. We haven't had a chance to approve it before the whole group yet. But Jennifer is right here and she'll read it if you have a minute. It was sent in this afternoon, but you might not have got a chance to see it.
Okay, well, since you've brought it up, why don't, why don't you read it? So we know what it says. It's brief, I believe.
Okay.
The Concord Agriculture Committee has decided to remain neutral on Article 49 regarding the disposition of neonicotinoid use on town owned land. We're not coming out against the article because we consider it a symbolic recognition of the problems presented by the casual widespread overuse of this class of pesticide. And importantly, the article only prohibits neonicotinoid use on brand new licenses as opposed to renewals, which will likely not immediately impact our agricultural consistency. We're not for it because a recent ruling by the Massachusetts Pesticide Board has determined that neonicotinoid pesticides, except for formulations designated for use or application in interior spaces to control bedbugs or structural pests or to apply on pets for flea and tick control, for example, will henceforth be categorized as restricted use pesticides in the state. This will eliminate direct distribution to homeowners and others without the appropriate credentials. Specifically, a pesticide applicator's license, the possession of which requires passing a test and the maintenance of which requires annual fees and declarations of actual pesticide usage and ongoing education regarding appropriate, safe and effective pesticide usage. Restricted use pesticides are not available for sale through retail outlets like garden centers or hardware stores, but must be purchased through specifically licensed dealers. We feel that the re-categorization of this problematic class of pesticide by the state is a more appropriate and effective approach to reducing their overuse. We are also concerned that specifically singling out and banning neonicotinoids on future agricultural leases could encourage the usage of other pesticides that are in fact more harmful to agricultural workers and potentially more harmful to bees and other wildlife.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was going to be quite that long, but the helpful information for us to have today. And I understand you you need to go to your ad committee to to sort of. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So I'm going to turn back to the select board members at this point. So I did have a chance to catch up with Delia Kay on this issue just briefly prior to this meeting. And her response was that this is a very complicated issue at this point. And so I'm I think there are a couple of things that we need to do here. I fully expected Mark Hanson to be here for a conversation with us today. I I will be back in touch with him to see if in fact this committee is going to be re-initiated. And Jane, you and I can work on that together perhaps. And and then ask the committee if they are recommending, not individual, if the committee is recommending this warrant article to the select board asking us to sponsor it. And again, our action and the reason for our discussion on on these various items today is just to make sure the public is aware that we're looking at these items and to define, get some clear definition either in the verbiage for the warrant articles themselves or the positions that are being taken by full committees on these before we then make a decision whether we're going to sponsor them. So this information is helpful and we'll look forward to the ad committee's input on this once you formalize it with your committee. Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, any other comments from the select board members? Okay. There are no committee nominations today. Committee appointments, would the clerk please call the committee appointments?
Move to appoint Peter Fashalis of 35 Longfellow Road to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project. Carleen Hampel of 50 Highland Street to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force for a term to expire September 30, 2023. Extend the terms of Krista Collins of 55 Highland Street, Sue Felsham of 19 Sunnyside Lane, Robert Hartman of 16 Concord Green and Harry Bartlett of 95 Conant Street on the Junction Village Open Space Task Force to expire on September 30, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Okay, there's miscellaneous correspondence included in our packet. Are there any additional public comments?
Linda, did you want to do liaison reports?
Yes. I do. Okay. I see Pamela Drit has her hand up again. Pamela, we've already heard one comment. If it's a new comment that you'd like to make, we're happy to hear it.
Just briefly, I wanted to request that I'm jealous of your packets. Is there somewhere that the public could have access to the packets that you're discussing?
You can access them on the website.
Oh, where? I couldn't find it.
Under the select board.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I see any other public comments? I do not. So liaison committee reports, who would like to go first? And we did, we did postpone them from last time. And let me just say that at least in my, as I reviewed my own list, many of the things that I would have talked about were covered at the preview meeting on Saturday, so I will not be reporting those items. So if you have items who fall in that category, please do the same just for the sake of brevity here. Terry, you'd like to go first?
Sure. Susan, you always go first, but.
It deliberately deferred.
Sorry, I saw her hand first, sorry.
Okay, so I attended the CMLP meeting. They'll be applying for a grant for another vehicle charging station. 300 Baker Ave is one of the largest electric users in town. And the owners are considering a large solar array and other initiatives because they're aiming to become carbon neutral there. So this is going to have a large effect in town and and also with the CMLP revenue. And a big project going on at CMLP is installing smart meters for all customers in 2023. There'll be an opt out policy for people who prefer analog meters. So this is a very long term project that they're already hearing up for. At CPW, there was a solid waste rate hearing. Rates have to go up 10%, which is about $40 a year for a total of $449 per household. And this is not even going to completely cover all the costs. The costs of recycling have, as everybody knows, gone up a lot. So this was the voted increase. At the ag committee, besides discussing the neonicotinoids, they discussed the Spring Forum, which was in the past a panel at the Harvey Wheeler. And this year, six to eight farms are going to have tours or demos in the month of May, plus videos on the local MMN channel. So watch for that. That's, that'll be fun. The local cultural council awarded 19 small grants to artists totaling $8,400. $6,400 comes from the Mass Cultural Council and 2,000 comes directly from the Concord Town Budget. And they're planning a fall reception for all the recipients. And finally, I attended the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee. They discussed a lot about the governor's preliminary budget, especially for regional transportation and charter school assessments. There's a lot of issues with that. And they also discussed this American stimulus plan, which right after that did pass the House of Representatives. It's the 1.9 trillion proposed by President Biden. And this is going to include 350 million for states and localities. And 40% of that money is going to go directly to cities and towns. The other 60% goes to the state to hopefully float back to us. So that's exciting news. If it goes through the Senate, it will be kind of like the CARES Act and and help cities and towns for economic vitality and COVID. That is my report.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, who would like to go next? Susan?
Yes, the Board of the Seizers has met a couple of times since I last reported and they're very efficiently going through their abatement applications at the rate of about 15 per meeting. So they they are on track to finish up in the next few weeks. I want to just make another comment on the COA, but they did meet and and to reiterate what Jane said, they're they're really doing a lot of outreach. And they, but the board is still needing one full member and two associate members. So if anyone out there is interested, this is great work that they're doing and they will be having another mask distribution coming up. I'm sorry, I don't remember the date. But it's masks that were donated by the Rotary Club. Let's see. The Economic Vitality Committee met and they discussed, and it was later brought up at the Planning Board, asking for relief for parking for seasonal dining beyond the the pandemic emergency order. And they also are forming a subcommittee to look at in turn, and this is in keeping with their kind of longer term view of their committee work, to identify the barriers to opening businesses in Concord and to start to get their arms around that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Who would like to go next? Jane?
Okay, well, as I said earlier, since many of the committees that I would have reported on have been mentioned in lead up, such as the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Climate Action Advisory Board, I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat any of that, nor am I going to spend any time on them. But they did meet and I did attend. We had, I attended the NRC meeting on the 17th. There'll be another one on Wednesday. And again, that probably the most significant piece of information that they continued to work on was the 50 foot no bid bill policy and their review of that. It's not finalized yet, but it'll be good to see when it is finished. The HGC, which I think most of us who are at the that's the Historic District Commission, other than than continued public hearings, they also discussed the current work with the Jenny Dugan Historic District concept ideas, but specifically the Main Street Historic District Extension, which is what they're bringing to town meeting this year. And again, I just wanted to reiterate to for those who are listening that the point that I continue to hear from the HGC, excuse my dog in the background, is that, you know, they don't go out seeking applications for to expand historic districts or to create them. They they're a resource for that if it comes to them from the community. And I think that'll be, you know, seen when when they bring the the two homes forward who are interested in becoming part of the Throe District. The Commission on Disability met and the most probably worthwhile, well, not worthwhile, but the most, there are two points of discussion that I think are worthy of our thinking about. One, they're really looking at funding requests that are coming to the commission. And so they have been looking, working with Jeremy and with other committees that that handle requests for small, you know, small amounts of money. Well, for for amounts of money under the cap of, for them, they've got $5,000 to distribute. And I think that that points to probably some guidance that it would be helpful to have from the town, you know, a standard format for any committee that is allocated as, you know, we're talking about a small fund, not a significant amount of fund, that isn't necessarily already guided by a trust by some of their incorporation documents. So that would be my plug from for our thinking about. And they also talked about another area of disability that has not yet been fully thought through, which is the needs of people with cognitive disabilities. And they specifically focused, and this is a point that I'm sure that Carmen will be hearing from their chair, which is needs of people with cognitive disabilities at town meeting. I know that that the Minuteman Arc was noted as, they they bring specific people with their community members to town meeting to help the the resident fully understand what they are voting on. But there isn't that, you know, we as a town or as a town meeting don't have that instilled. I mean, we've only recently during my tenure on select board consistently brought forward somebody who would handle it for those who are American, you know, for sign language or for other other hearing impairments. So but I suspect we didn't hear more about that. And then the White Pond Advisory Committee met. And most specifically for our own, you know, sort of get ready, think this is coming at some point, was a discussion of their revising of the 2015 document, A Shared Future of Comprehensive Vision for White Pond and its watersheded neighborhoods. So they're looking at Jerry Frankel's former report and bringing it up to date with sort of, you know, checklist of where 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 things have gone and what still needs to to happen. We had a long conversation about erosion control, about what the town has already been doing, what the town is doing. And then what the neighborhood could potentially reinvigorate on. on, as a neighborhood, in terms of educating perhaps new residents and taking a more proactive and perhaps a way of doing some kind of data management on what, what the, what the private landholders are doing to help with erosion control on the pond themselves. And then the only other meeting that I can think of that I attended was also the Regional Gas Leaks Task Force. And I just think that as we move forward, looking at things like the legislation on electrification of new developments, et cetera, it's clear that National Grid is looking at its approach to gas leaks from a system-wide perspective, and there is going to be a map going online that should be fairly interactive to demonstrate where the large leaks are and where the smaller leaks are. As soon as that comes online, I will make sure that everybody on the Select Board and that we have a way to link people who are interested from the town to see what, what Concord's piece of that is. That's enough from me. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. Matt?
Yeah, so for, first of all, there was a public forum for the Concord Middle School Building Committee last week, a good review of the many design issues ahead, and there were concerns raised by the public about sustainability, especially sort of building to net zero versus being net zero-ready, the size of the music space and the size of the auditorium. There also, after the meeting, there has been a tremendous number of emails received about the desire for two basketball courts in the gym. So clearly there are a lot of competing desires, you know, for the middle school and uses beyond just the bare minimum academic use that will have to be sorted out. Then we had the first meeting of the Recreation Commission chaired by the new interim director Anna McKeon, and we reviewed, first of all, the planned enhancements to White Pond, as well as the summer camp plans where it's actually been oversubscribed, and they're seeking ways to expand the number of campers that can be supported in a safe way, and they believe they have a way to do that. And then brainstorming how to help at the BD Center, which has suffered reduction in membership of late. So those are just some of the highlights from the Recreation Commission. The Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee had two meetings since we last had a liaison report, planning for the virtual Patriots Day commemoration, and also deliberating in the honored citizen for this year. So that's what's going on there. And the Community Preservation Committee was unable to meet due to some technical difficulties, so they have not approved their warrant article yet. So that's going to be taken care of. The voting has already taken place on the recommendation, so that was just fine for the town preview meeting. It's really just specific wording. And then I'd just like to mention that tonight on Channel 5, WCVBTV, 7:30 I believe, the program Chronicle will feature Concord. So something to look forward to.
Very good. Thank you. I too attended the Middle School Community Forum, School Building Committee public forum, and it was, they felt well-attended with 83 members there, I guess. The only comment I would add to Matt's comments is that they still are looking at base construction of 80 million and total project cost of 100 million, but a lot still has to be worked out with all the concerns that Matt enumerated.
That's right. How to keep it all in the box.
Exactly. The, met with Hats a couple of weeks ago, and I would just say that they had invited Mary Curlew, who's a licensed social worker with the Massachusetts Coalition for Suicide Prevention in. Over the last two years, I think all of the communities that are represented by Hats are acutely aware of it in the increased stress that both citizens and some of our high school students in particular, but not limited to high school, are feeling. And in fact, there have been incidences of suicide in all of our communities in the last couple of years. So she provided an extensive list of resources. Two communities in particular, Bedford and Lexington, I will note, have actually taken on projects for townwide projects to address this topic with the help of outside consultants.
Can I ask a quick question? Was that the Hats Committee?
Yes.
So this is the Hanscom area. I just didn't realize that was the breadth of the committee's discussion. That's fascinating.
Yeah, well, typically, this was somewhat unusual to take on this topic, but it's of concern to all of the communities, so it.
Oh, I'm not arguing it. I'm just fascinated by the venue.
Yeah, 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 it doesn't typically happen. Right. And all the other committees that I said, you know, we know the result, whether it was FinCom or some of the other committees that I attend, we know the outcome of that based on the presentations at our recent preview meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did we need to repeat public miscellaneous and public comments, or are we set?
I did, I did go ahead and finish my comment on miscellaneous correspondence, which is that it's included in the packet. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Second.
Good. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thanks, everyone, for all your work, and we'll take action next week on all those other items. Thanks, bye.